Well, we all might have different questions.
Good morning. Welcome to the April eighth session of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Michelle Walton, please roll call.
Kurttenbach.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Brant.
Here.
And Hall.
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received is proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Item four, we have a proclamation for the week of April seventh, National Public Health Week. Oh, I'm sorry, years of service or more to employees with twenty years or more of service.
Yes, the county wants to recognize Troy Peterson with Blackhawk County Conservation for thirty years of service.
And I apologize, I was, I was really trying to get through this agenda.
That's right.
Public comment, do we have anyone who wants to speak on item that is not on today's agenda? Item in the room or online? What? See, it was fine. Item four, proclamation, week of April seventh, twenty twenty-five, National Public Health Week.
Good morning, Board. I have a proclamation in front of me. Would you like for me to read it now or do you? Okay. The proclamation reads, whereas the week of April seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, is National Public Health Week, and this year's theme, It Starts Here, highlights the importance of making a difference in our homes and communities. Whereas this year marks the thirtieth anniversary of National Public Health Week. And over the past three decades, public health initiatives have led to significant advancements in health and well-being, including, number one, HIV and AIDS prevention and treatment. Deaths due to HIV and AIDS, which peaked at forty-nine thousand ninety-five deaths in nineteen ninety-four, have dropped significantly due to anti-retroviral therapy, which allows most people with HIV to live normal life spans. And prevention tools like PrEP that significantly reduce transmission. Number two, tobacco control. Smoking rates among US adults once as high as twenty-five point five percent in nineteen ninety-four have now fallen to eleven point four percent thanks to comprehensive smoke-free policies, public awareness campaigns, and tobacco taxation. Number three, childhood mortality reduction. The childhood mortality rate has decreased from thirteen point eight deaths per thousand live births in nineteen ninety-four to five point four deaths per one thousand live births due to vaccines, improved healthcare access, and better nutrition. Number four, lead poisoning prevention. The percentage of US children with elevated blood lead levels has dropped from four point four percent in nineteen ninety-four to less than point five percent due to policies eliminating leaded gasoline and reducing lead in paint pipes and water systems. Number five, mental health awareness and treatment. Have significantly, have advanced significantly since nineteen ninety-four, when forty percent of people with mental health conditions went untreated. Increased awareness, parity laws, and integration into primary care have expanded access to mental health services and helped reduce treatment gaps. Number six, health impacts from severe weather events. The health risks associated with flooding, extreme heat, and other severe weather events were largely unrecognized in nineteen ninety-four. Today, public health campaigns, along with local and regional preparedness coalitions, play a critical role in helping communities mitigate risks, respond effectively, and recover more quickly. Number seven, pandemic preparedness. Once in its infancy in nineteen ninety-four, pandemic preparedness has significantly advanced, leading to increased investments in public health infrastructure, strategic stockpiles, global surveillance, and scientific breakthroughs that must be sustained. And number eight, vaccination progress. Immunization remains one of the most significant public health achievements, reducing cases, hospitalizations, and deaths from vaccine-preventable diseases while lowering healthcare costs. Whereas bias, including but not limited to racism, xenophobia, transphobia, heterosexism, evilism, and sexism, is a public health crisis, and individuals who experience discrimination continue to face disparities in illness and mortality rates. Whereas a person's health status can vary significantly based on zip code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community resources, access to healthy food, education, and healthcare. Whereas public health professionals collaborate across sectors, including with city planners, transportation officials, educators, and private businesses, recognizing that factors outside of traditional healthcare have a profound impact on health outcomes. Whereas National Public Health Week serves as an opportunity to educate public policymakers, public health professionals, and the public on key health issues and the importance of strengthening public health infrastructure. Whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from a full range of health threats, from infectious disease outbreaks to national disasters. Whereas continued support for public health and prevention efforts is essential to transforming a healthcare system focused on treating illness into one that prioritizes disease prevention, health promotion, and long-term wellness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors supports the goals and ideals of National Public Health Week and recognizes the efforts of local, state, and national public health professionals in protecting people from health hazards, promoting healthy behaviors, and preventing disease.
Move chairperson.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any comments?
I'm just, just thank you for everything that you do and all the staff and the board. I'm always continuously amazed by the thoughtfulness at which public health professionals approach issues and problems. And I've, frankly, I've learned a lot from, from observing the work of all the great public health professionals in Blackhawk County.
Appreciate it seeing the guest editorial as well and creating slides.
The motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
Can we do a photo?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I was asking if you wanted to do a photo?
Yep.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Item five, claims and payments. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors approving expenditures that the county ordered to be authorized and direct to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as well. Move.
Second.
Motion and second, this group, please.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payments today are seven hundred ten thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. And the sixty-fourty bond out of that is two thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and one cent. We are paying about, well, three hundred and sixty-five thousand fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents to young coming, and that is for the ARPA JLH VAC project, so that's exciting to see that moving along. We are paying about sixty-five thousand on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail today. And then we are making our first payment to Taves Contracting on the Washburn Lagoon Fencing. That amount is thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions today?
It's exciting to see a number of ARPA things going.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brant. Brant? Kurttenbach?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Item six, receive project updates from department heads or elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas Engineer. Briefly, our gravel roads continue to be in pretty good condition. We have very few frost boils this year. We are just about finished pulling in the shoulders on the gravel road, so those should be improving. We have also started our contract maintenance work yesterday. Our contractor moved in and he, they are beginning crack filling throughout the county, starting in the northeast portion of the county and then working their way clackwise around the county till, to finish up in the Hudson area, south of Hudson. Can I answer any questions about the roads today?
Yeah, we had a couple of, or a quick issue out there in Streeter a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
And I met with the gentleman in person, spent a couple of hours visiting with him. I do need to visit with you and Ryan and get some more information on how we deal with some. I know gravel roads are not just throw more rock on it and fixing the thing, but I need more education on how better we can help some of these folks out there. I did go down Leversie Road with the frost boils and that's another one that's... Just learning on gravel roads, how you, how you maintain it so I can help with education on that.
Yeah, we're happy to meet with you anytime. Thank you.
I do have an update I want to give as well. Waterworks was in Washburn last week working on repairing a shut-off valve to a home and they had problems with the valve also on the main, which is our responsibility to repair. So they're, they are repairing it. I don't know cost yet, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware that's coming. That's all I have.
Hi, Gabby DeWitt, marketing coordinator. Just wanted to let the board know that we'll be attending the Earth Fair as part of City of Cedar Falls. It's, I think it's their first event, but we'll be having a table for Blackhawk County. And Conservation has gotten us a lot of great things kind of in the Earth Fair theme, and then we'll also be taking some information about the adoptive peri program for the IRVM program.
What is that?
It's on Saturday from ten to one over by Gateway Park where they've got the new water feature. So it's over there. Great. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. Just a note for strategic planning this afternoon. They have started to work on the building to waterproof the walls. So we have a three-sided moat right now with a big pile of dirt. We have plenty of parking spaces, don't anyone panic when you get there. We'll get you inside. Some early birds can park right in front of the building. We are entering the building, in the front of the building. Few cars can park there. A few cars can park on the extreme west side of the parking lot and east side of the parking lot. And then we can put the rest in the back and we'll have to start maybe a second row back there. And you'll just see, the dirt piles are the, are the issue. We can get everybody in there. When you get there though, you'll go, oh my God, what's happening? We're just, we're just getting a project done, so I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. I know not everybody's here today, but if you can pass the word to those that might not get this, so that they are aware of the situation when they get there. So, all right. Thank you.
Can you give the department head in the room or online?
Good morning, Board. It's Yolanda Lovelace, the Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs, and I just wanted to share just a couple of slides, if I can, with the group. I was out walking around this morning, looking at all the great work that the construction guys are doing with the remodel of our building. Can you see my slides?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so just, just real quick, in, in memory of Mr. John Ro, Ro, Low, excuse me. He was a school teacher here in Waterloo. He was the first African-American to teach in the district. He was also an assistant principal at East High in the seventies, retired from the school system. But the unique thing about this, he was a veteran who was a Purple Heart recipient during World War Two. And he served alongside various boards to include the Cattle Congress Board, the Urban Renewal, and Operation Threshold, along with being active in the political parties. Another, one of our heroes here who have set a legacy, whether it was through public contribution or in our, our school system. So we, we thank him for the life and the legacy that Mr. Low has set. Just looking at our project timeline, I took some pictures today, so just wanted to share that the windows are in. Those are windows all the way from the ceiling to the floor. The roof looks like it's about ninety percent done. And they are making great progress. If you haven't been out there, we're still excited. And then just another view showing more of the windows that are going in the construction that is happening at the remodel. And then just a quick slide just showing again, we're still active in our, our care facilities, getting out, thank yous to them. And you can see, and we've already shared these slides, but where we're at and in all, each month for the rest of this year, we're going to make sure that we are visiting our care facilities with our veterans and surviving spouses in them. Again, showing them that we are still, they're still on our minds. We still care about them and they're still very important. In our March production, you guys can see the numbers there. Those, we call those retro pays, and what we're seeing now is it's taken a little bit longer to process claims. It used to be about ninety to a hundred and twenty days. They're going out about five to six months now. And so, and that's why the retro pays are so high because they pay back to the date of claim. Some of these claims are, you know, they, they did an intent to file, so they could be eight, nine months. And that's why you'll see that some of these numbers are high when we talk about clients that we see that are getting their, their entitlement, but entitlement is pretty good. So it's a great thing for the, for the veteran or surviving spouse in that standpoint and continues to motivate us to let us know that we're doing well within the county. As we completed our third quarter, now moving into our fourth quarter, we look at our lines of engagement. And you can see that we're pretty green on everything but the food pantry and scheduling of van rides. And we do comparisons. I look at a comparison of what we were in fiscal year twenty-four, third quarter, compared to the fiscal year twenty-five, and that's why those two are yellow. Same thing with the pensions and the compensation and the Iowa Trust Fund, but other metrics we are pretty much green in. And then our last one, which is our administration and budgeting, our scheduled appointments are, are down. And we are actively looking at how do we improve that or are we really at our pinnacle in that standpoint? Our actual goal is to have about two hundred, first time, or not first time, but at least initial visits through our doors. That's what we used to average. And it's starting to see that average go down. And so we'll continue to do what we can to actively see if we're meeting the mark. And one way we're doing that is, is taking a snapshot of who's coming in our doors, whether you're from the, from Blackhawk County, within the county itself, whether you're Waterloo, whether you're Cedar Falls or surrounding cities, and also other counties. And then we're also looking at the service components that are coming through the door. Another way to help us do that is we're, we're looking at averages too, so we can see that, you know, that Elk Run, the only, in three months, we only have five people come from Elk Run or three from Hudson. So is that the area that we probably need to focus more outreach? And we're working with Gabby and she's helping us with a lot of the social media aspects to see if we can draw in more of the surrounding cities to, to make sure that they're aware of our, our services that we provide. The other thing is there is a service officer now at the Waterloo outpatient clinic and they are getting a lot of our, our numbers also, which affects our numbers because they're seeing a veteran right there as they come out of their medical appointments. It's all about taking care of the veterans. And then on the other side, you can see where we're at in the third quarter with the other counties, the total of thirty-seven, and where they're coming from. And so it gives us a snapshot picture of who we are servicing throughout the month. And then from our social media data, this is again a plug to Gabby, which is helping us to show the people who follow us on social media, what we're doing, who's coming in our doors, and what their percentages are. And so we're thankful that she's helping us with our outreach to, to let people know that we're here to help. Then our donations and grants, you can see that we had two hundred and seventy dollars come in in March donations. And then our revenue and where we're at with our balances of our revenue. And then our beneficiaries, we can see that we are still about three point six million in monthly grant totals for about two thousand and seventeen surviving spouses and veterans who are receiving benefits. And in a comparison with the Big Eight. Where we at with our, our general services to veterans? The only thing that we expended last month was funeral expenses. As you can see, everything else remained black, which means wasn't utilized in that standpoint. Right now with ending the fourth, ending the third quarter, moving into the fourth quarter, you can see our expense for about sixteen thousand dollars. A little bit over what we did last year because last year we were about fourteen total for the full year. And we're monitoring that as we go forth. And then where we at with helping veterans and what we did with our donated funds and with some of the county funds, like with the cremations. Thing that you notice in March trust fund dispersment, we had someone who had a emergency furnace repair and that was a ten thousand dollar. And that comes out of Iowa Trust Fund and you also had the auto and dental for a total of fifteen thousand dollars. Some of our March events, which we participated in. And then just stand by to address any questions or concerns. I just wanted to be quick with that because I did share the slides with you guys earlier. But I wanted to just kind of rehash what, what we did for the third quarter and kind of show some of the pictures as we are excited about moving into the facilities, if you guys allow us to.
Well, we're definitely going to allow you to. I think we all appreciate the, the report and appreciate the work you've done though, so. All right. Item seven, minutes approved, April first. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item eight is that we've got, motion carries. Item eight, that we've got a hearing at nine oh five. Bid opening for proposed furniture for VA at the Blackhawk County Pine Crest Campus. Item nine, the items listed that will be acted upon as a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or public requests that a specific item be considered separate. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, resolution. Yep. Roll call, please.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurttenbach?
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Item ten A, a resolution to approve change order number one in the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars with Taves Construction, a Contracting Services LLC. For the twenty twenty-four Washburn Sewer Lagoon Fence Project, authorize the chair to sign the change order as recommended by AECOM Technical Services, Inc. and Michelle Wiedner, Finance Director.
So move.
Motion and second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Either one.
All of them.
Thank you.
Motion and second.
Good.
It's a resolution. Roll call, please.
Kurttenbach?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Ten B, a resolution of the proposal for Envision, Waterloo, Iowa, for forty-four thousand dollars for space needs facility assessment for Blackhawk County Road Department. Be approved and for the chair to sign as recommended by Captain Nicholas County Engineer.
So move.
So I go.
Yeah, good morning again, Board. As you know, we budgeted approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in FY twenty-five and a hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-six to start moving us forward in possibly a new maintenance facility out at Longfellow. The first item we need to tackle is a space needs study. We put together an RFP and sent that out to, to six vendors, architects in the east Iowa. Five of them responded. We did have five of them come and visit Longfellow while they were preparing their RFPs or their bids. And in looking at, we put together a team to score the criteria, score them on designated criteria. And in selecting our architect, we feel that Envision would be, they are the best qualified. They have the most experience with the public works type of facility. They are local to us here in Waterloo, but most importantly, they do have the most experience. They gave us a very reasonable cost to do the work of forty-four thousand dollars, and I would like to recommend that you sign the contract with Envision to begin this process.
What was the range of submissions?
Yep, the ISG Architecture gave us a bid of sixty-four thousand, five hundred. And Origin Design out of Dubuque gave us a bid of thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And I sent you this information in an email last, last week.
What question?
Yep.
If we were to look at adding another department on this building in future time, is that part of what we'd be including in this? Would that have an option on that as well?
So I, I can't speak for Envision. We didn't, I would not think that that would be out of the realm of possibilities, but we would have to consider, we would have to not speak with Envision about that, making a change or...
I think you'd also need to identify a different funding stream because we're using secondary roads funding for this, which would not be able to be used for another, well, assume, well, yeah, any other department would fit, yeah.
But we can move forward with the idea that there could be an option in the future in, in the, in the thought pattern for this design.
I, I think that would require some amendment for what they're proposing right now. Right now it's a contract straight up for a designing or assessing the needs of the engineer's office. Again, what Michelle said, because of the, where the funds are coming from, we're strictly at this point in keeping it to the engineer's office. I don't think that would prohibit, you know, some kind of amendment or adding a certain son, son of such funding for that in the future.
Timeline for that, Kathy, as far as doing bidding.
We estimate late, late fall, having some, a study completed by them will certainly keep you posted.
All right, resolution. Roll call, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brant?
Yep.
Kurttenbach?
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Item eleven A, a motion to authorize and direct the chair to sign for fiscal year twenty-six. Iowa Department of Transportation Secondary Roads Budget and Five-Year Construction Plan as recommended by Captain Nicholas County. So move.
Second.
Okay, good morning again, Board. As you know, the Iowa Code, the Iowa Department of Transportation requires us to submit our budget and our five-year plan by April thirtieth of every year. And we'll briefly walk through this and you'll see why submitting the five-year plan and the budget together is really a good picture of what we do on an annual basis is really what you need to consider when you're looking at the activities in the Roads Department. I just briefly wanted to go over our revenues that we do receive in the Roads Department. There are several different types of funds. And first is our farm-to-market system fund that, that was established by the Iowa Legislature a hundred years ago, just like the secondary road fund. And we are given a certain amount of money by formula. All counties are. This only goes to counties. And we are receiving approximately one point six million dollars. This money does not run to the county budget. It stays with the DOT, but we are allowed, of course, to spend it. We also receive federal bridge funds. This year, we're estimating that we will receive approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We primarily spend this on the bridges throughout the county. And there, there is criteria that the Federal Highway Administration has established that we are, that designates which bridges are eligible to use this funding on. We are able to save that. We don't have to spend that much money every year. If we have a larger bridge coming up, we are able to save that. We also receive money through a competitive process at the RTA and the MPO funding at that level. We meet every year and submit projects. We don't submit projects every, we don't always submit projects every year, but locally we submit projects and compete with our local neighbors on projects. Both of, or excuse me, all three of those. Both of, or excuse me, all three of those funds do not typically run through our budget. Uh, the two funds that do run through our budget would be the secondary road fund and we've talked extensively about this uh last month, so I'm just gonna gloss over these two. You can see that we do receive a portion from property taxes and of course, the road use tax fund uh coming from the state of Iowa. And then the last fund would be the local option sales tax, which we are receiving approximately two million dollars for FY twenty six. Um, just to recap, because this is what we are sending to the Iowa DOT. Uh, we did, I put up a comparison from last year to this year with our secondary road fund expenses as well as our uh the lost. But uh you can see in FY twenty six, we are, we are utilizing the local option sales tax funds more heavily this coming year. So that we can minimize some of the funding for projects in our secondary road fund so so that we have flexibility to. Begin working, saving on our possible replacement at Longfellow. Uh, just very briefly, I thought I'd give you a snapshot of the condition of the roads in Blackhawk County. They are generally uh excellent to good. The DOT uh collects data uh on the surface, surface treatments, surface conditions of our roads. On a four-year cycle, so they continue to remain good. And that our bridge conditions are very similar. Uh, most of them, the vast majority of them are already good to fair condition. With just nineteen being rated S four this year. Uh, briefly go through the five-year program, please. Uh, let me know if you have any questions. Uh, I'll focus more on, for example, next year FY twenty six. Uh, we will be doing that project on Raymond Road. We've talked to you about uh working with the city of Gilbertville and the city of Raymond to get this entire roadway resurfaced from. The city limits of Gilbertville up to Dubuque Road. And then we do have uh several bridges next year. And then we are resurfacing Donald Street. We are working with the city of Waterloo in that in conjunction on that project. Uh, we did receive some money from the MPO on that project. And then, of course, we are shifting our crack filling. We are now using. We will be uh using money, two hundred thousand dollars for that. And then we purchase right away. Most years when we are uh doing bridge replacements is usually where we are purchasing right away. I won't go through every single year because they are two or three years out and they can change. We're pretty set, pretty firm on FY twenty six and FY twenty seven. In our out years, we are not quite as certain. They could change. I will mention that in FY twenty nine, we did recently receive money from uh the RTA. For a project we are working with on Grundy Road. It's out at the Grundy Road, uh Blackhawk County Line. And that would be the intersection of at University Avenue and Ridgeway Avenue, just north of Highway twenty. Uh, we will work on a joint project with them to redo, reconstruct that intersection. So every year we have bridges, bridge contracts, we have uh the bridge crew, our bridge crew will will be replacing one to two bridges. As well as resurfacing projects. Can I answer any specific questions about the five-year plan?
Question.
Yes.
Kathy, the question I have on the current road condition, is that just on the hard surface roads or is that included?
Yes. Yes, correct. We don't uh don't, we do not rate the gravel roads for uh condition.
And again, I want to say, uh, I was there at the meeting when Ryan got those dollars for his masterful job. It was very impressive how all that went down, got came together.
So you can see uh this slide shows our five-year plan, shows the five types of funding broken out and. How we will finance this for the next five years. So this is what we are submitting to the Iowa Department of Transportation. And lastly, we'd like to uh put this uh map together that shows you, shows the public. We do put this on our website as well. Uh, we categorize it by color for the next five years. So that's a pretty uh useful way of looking at our road and bridge projects over the next five years. And I've given you a copy of that. We can make you a larger map of this if you'd like. And if there are no further questions, I'd recommend that you approve this so that we can send it to the the Department of Transportation.
I do have a a question on, um, I think it was the total of nineteen percent that were classified as as poor condition.
Yes.
Yep.
Could produce.
Are those projects, are those the ones that are in your five-year? Does that, in theory, does that get us closer at zero? Understanding that there is continued deterioration of existing roads, but.
Yes, so Brian, you can fill in here if you'd like. Uh, typically, we we will never have. Any, we will not have any bridges on an annual cycle that are not rated. Or that is what um drives the federal funding.
Yep.
And it also uh allows us to replace them with our our bridge crews.
Yep.
Yeah, so like like Kathy said, um, one of the requirements for the use of the federal aid for for our bridge program is that the bridge is rated in poor condition. Um, so so doing roughly two bridges with our bridge per year plus typically one contract bridge for a five-year plan, that's. I I want to say fifteen of the nineteen are in our program for replacement in the next five years. Um, and like Kathy said, you know, some of those eighty-eight are going to continue to deteriorate, so we will continue to have more.
Yep.
Poor ones come up. We'll also have more move from that border to the good category as well, so.
Are there counties that that invest outside of those federal dollars? So that, so that you do start to chip away and not sort of maintain it.
Yeah, and 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 we are in our program. So at at five hundred and fifty thousand a year, what we're getting in federal aid, that's that's not enough. To do a bridge project a year. Most of the projects that we're doing are in the six to nine hundred thousand dollar range with our federal aid. Um, so two, I believe, two or three of our larger projects are actually going to be funded out of our lost funding. Um, and then all of our bridge crew projects are also funded out of our lost funding. So we're we're investing substantially more out of that category than what we receive in front of it.
If there's nothing else, we've got a a motion and a second, I believe. Um. All right, this is a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Item eleven B, motion of personnel requisition. For a financial accounting specialist in unit one, pay grade GS twelve, full-time replacement in the sheriff's office with an estimated. Uh, start date of May nineteenth or twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, to allow for proper training, be approved as recommended by Sheriff Nadeau.
Morning, morning, Sheriff Nadeau. Um, yeah, so uh Jody Mayne is retiring this July eleventh. She put her letter in from yesterday, day before. Um, if she'd stayed just a little bit longer, she would have forty-eight years in with the county. I I tried to push her to do over fifty since she's as old. She wasn't having it. Um, but I mean, obviously, forty-eight years, Jody has a wealth of knowledge over there. Pretty much any of our revenue, any of her grants, any of that stuff goes through her. Um, she hasn't decided for sure how much time she's taken off, but a good chunk of the last half of June and end of July, she's gonna be gone. So depending on how long the hire process takes and exactly how much time she decides to take off, I would love to get somebody in there mid-May to late May at the latest to to get some time with her.
So the nineteen versus twenty-seventh is just depending on how quick you could get somebody.
Depending on how quick I get somebody hired. And if she decides she's not gonna take as much time in June, obviously, I can push my start date back a little bit later in May. But if she decides come June fifteenth, she's essentially done, then I'm gonna try and get somebody in there that week sooner, so.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Kurttenbach, second by Layman. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Item eleven C, motion that the personnel requisition for the engineering technician. Um. Yep, uh, full-time replacement for the Roads Department uh with an estimated start date May fifth. Uh, to allow for proper training, be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas.
So move. Second.
My comments are similar tonight. We do have a long time of employees, twenty-nine years, who will be retiring in mid-July. We would, we do have, our technician series is a one or two or a three. We are just going to open that up and and uh engineering technicians are very difficult to find. So uh we are uh opening it up for any category at this time. We're hoping that. Uh, we could get someone here by mid to late May so that we could have several weeks of overlap. Uh, we are losing a lot of knowledge uh with this employee retiring, so. Very much look forward to uh this being approved so we can get the the process started.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same side. That motion carries. Eleven D, resolution of the tax sales certificate assignment for vacant lot parcel eight nine one three dash two four dash one eight one dash zero zero three. Certificate two zero zero two zero zero one two three nine, owner Herbert Smith, located in Waterloo, pursuit. Uh, subsection four four six point three one of the code of Iowa will be approved. Uh, said certificate of purchase or sale, uh, tax sale be assigned. Uh, by Demetrius Johnson, as presented by the Department of County Treasurer. So move.
Second.
This is a resolution. Roll call, please.
Brant. Can you do?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Kurttenbach?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item eleven E, resolution of the compromise uh offered in the amount of five hundred dollars for parcel. Eight nine one three dash two four dash one eight one dash zero zero three by Demetrius Johnson on tax sales, or on taxes owed, uh, for a lot be approved.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second question.
Uh, I asked a little bit about this last week and this came up. Um, is this, how do you guys have had anything in the past of how you determine value in dollar amounts? Is it just strictly something that's offered or?
No. Good morning, Board. Lyndon Hensman, you have a question on that or?
Lyndon, I've been kind of asking what the board's done in the past more than, because I have, I my information you sent was great, appreciate all that. But I didn't know how the board handled some of these decisions on the properties.
We don't always accept what's offered. We've encountered in different, just on different properties or had our reasons, I guess, for not doing it, so. Oh, they've got any idea on percentages and how many times.
I know on my end, I I can't offer any advice to the person putting in the request. Um, all I am is the in-between. Um, from my view is either the property continues to sit dormant. And nobody cares or loves for it or, you know, pays taxes or anything on it. Versus we get something, someone else moves forward, does all the legalities, they take ownership of it from that point on. Then it becomes back on the tax rolls, gets cleaned up and it just, it's it's kind of a positive thing for whatever area it might be in.
What, do you know what the tax bill was?
Six hundred and eighty dollars or something like that, wasn't it?
What's that? That was actually due.
Yeah, that was due.
Um, I know that the actual net taxes. Um, because I tried to go off of principal real estate taxes was six hundred and eighty-four and that was minus all of the interest.
And he'd been mowing it, I think, for years, like twenty years or something too, so it's a person that's been taking care of it. So you do consider all the factors you want to. It doesn't mean, like I say, we're still through the consensus of the board.
Yeah, it usually helps when they actually add something more to the request and it's next to a family home or. We would like to move forward and build, you know, some living orders for individuals or something. I know there's times that. Um, like the city of Waterloo was sent or asked for a request and then the end is ends up being Habitat for Humanity. Ends up building something there which benefits all of us all the way down.
And we have rejected some.
Yes.
As well.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So it's a very low dollar offer for a really large parcel that seems to be, it could be attractive to others or others to be aware of it or more aware of it, so.
Yeah, and it's kind of a miss. That's why I tried to go out there and get like a mapping showing all of you where the property is at. Uh, what the assessed value is of it, what what are the taxes due. And that that way you're able to, hopefully that kind of helps guide your direction on which way you want to go with it.
And then one of those can drive over, take a look yourself and that type of thing too.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Do we have a resol, do we have a motion already? Uh, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Kurttenbach?
Yes.
Leyland? Paul?
Yes. Item eleven F, motion to approve job request submitted by Al U, IT Director, be approved and Director Chair to sign for same estimated cost of two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars. For Natalie Nunez, Jason Ryan, Matt Strong and Al U, who attended Iowa Technology uh Geospatial Conference, ITAG in Des Moines. Uh, scheduled June fourth through the sixth, twenty twenty-five. So move.
Second.
Morning, Board. Al U, IT Director, this is the annual ITAG conference uh that we usually attend. I believe we have one staff member that is presenting this year, so. Kind of kind of exciting, so. Uh, any any questions I can answer for you guys?
Who's presenting?
Huh?
Who's presenting?
I think Natalie.
Okay.
So, yeah, and they asked one of us to present too, so we're thinking about it, so.
All right, uh, this is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item eleven G, motion to direct the county auditorium to advertise the public hearing to be held at nine oh five AM. On Tuesday, April twenty-second in Boardroom two oh one of Blackhawk County Courthouse three sixteen, East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa. On a proposed ordinance number seven seven dash two nine s, two nine three. Uh, from a request submitted by Robert and Heather Brady to rezone point six nine acres from A Agricultural District to CM, Commercial Manufacturing District. To allow for a commercial dog kennel, uh, dog boarding, daycare and grooming facility with the addition of a forty-eight by seventy-two uh foot. Uh, which is three hundred and four, three thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet building located at one zero one six two South Hudson Road. So move.
Second.
Do we have a meeting that day or to that? We sell a a regular meeting, but we're doing our budget meeting on the twenty-first, is that?
Um, we have a. Well, so far, we have the budget meeting on that day, but we haven't decided, I guess, we want to have a board meeting on that day as well or we want to have a board meeting on the twenty-second.
It's fine, I mean, either way, I I won't be here on the twenty-second. I'll I'll be on, I'll be on a plane, but um. Yeah. It's fine to try and keep it.
I I'd want to have the meetings or if we wanted to do, or or do that, so I've all.
How many other things would that change, I guess, for it? I'm I'm just curious. I don't know if we even know yet. Have we set any dates for anything to be on the twenty-second that we? Are aware of that we've declared some rescheduling that I.
That we can't, I think, off the top of my head.
And I I don't, I mean, it's it's fine if I.
Well, I did, since you're mentioning that eighth hour, I was gonna ask later, um, in the meeting schedule about the um information for the board. That I believe the day I had missed the meeting and did a Zoom, that you talked about having a presentation um on the twenty-second. And I was wondering if you were fine with us doing it on the twenty-second. Great, but yeah, Nate, when I talked about it a little bit yesterday, but it was just like, if it's gonna be another day, then maybe we wait till the.
Just checking if we need to push that back, because I know I've got Chief Duncan and some of my investigators stuck behind on coming on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
So, but but it'd be great if you were here, I assume, so I just thought that's your call. Maybe move to the twenty-nine or is that a week later to give?
We later, or we see if they come on the twenty-first, or we're gonna have our our budget and our regular meeting on the twenty-first instead.
I can check with Duncan, I'm I'm, I know I'll make it work.
Guess we need to maybe check calendars and stuff and then decide next week or.
Yeah, but but I don't want to set a, I don't want to set a.
Too close.
Well, I don't want to set a public hearing on the twenty-second. We're not gonna have a meeting on the twenty-second.
So then you should probably take action to cancel the meeting and then call for a special meeting on the twenty-first since that's not our regular scheduled meeting. Does that make sense? If you're gonna do that.
Well.
I don't, yeah, people need to make sure they have enough time to get that.
Reason.
Zone published, because that's.
Yeah, to say that, to do that.
So, so perhaps we just leave the meeting on the twenty-second, I'll miss it, that's fine, right?
Um, and hang that up afterwards and.
Put Spilsova, who made their presentation when you're here.
If, yeah, if they're they're open to that, so.
If they're open.
Move it, move that presentation to the twenty-ninth.
You're going to go twenty-ninth?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep the twenty-second, uh, as a, as a regular board meeting, um, and then on the twenty-ninth, if folks are available.
Sounds good.
All right. Thanks.
Bye.
Um, that was a mo, uh, we had a motion. Do we have a motion and a second? All in.
Um, yes.
All right. Uh, all in favor of publishing that public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item 11H, uh, nine fifty, uh, hearing and bid opening for proposed furniture for Veterans Affairs in Blackout County Pinecrest Campus. We have a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication and release upon. So move. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a motion to close, uh, the hearing after oral remarks.
Some question? Any?
No, nothing.
Uh, good morning, Board. Roy Givens, Facilities Director. Uh, we received, uh, four bids. This is for the furniture package for the new VA Center. Uh, first bid here is from Office Concepts out of Cedar Falls. Looks like they did provide the performance bond or bid bond. Office Concepts bid is ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Nine six, seven nine seven and twenty-two cents. Next one is from Kirk Gross. Looks like they also have their bid bond. Their bid came in at, uh, one hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. One zero five, eight nine two, point three zero. Third one from Lodal out of Dubuque. Looks like they also have their bid bond. Their bid came in at ninety-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and thirty-five cents. Nine five, one one zero, point three five.
Roy, just have a question. You have in there the phase A furniture. How many phases or what's the determination of what's in phase A, phase A versus another phase?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
It says black, the Pinecrest Renovations Phase A Furniture. What's the distinction of phase A?
So the phase A is the VA Center. Um, and then we'll, phase B moving forward will be the Pinecrest Health Department and the clinic.
Thank you.
You said we have four bids?
I thought we had four, but maybe not. I guess I was wrong. Apologize, there's only three. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um. Uh, do we take action on the, uh, H two, on the motion to close?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then that's open and then now.
I don't know. We took, we had a motion and a second. We didn't take action on, uh, so we need to.
No, for second.
All right. All in favor to close the hearing, uh, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Now, do we have a motion of the Board to supervise and review and place on file the bids to allow time to review this, uh, said bids as recommended by Roy Givens, uh, Facility Director. So move.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carries. Item twelve, uh, work session, discussion of possible board action for all aspects of the FY twenty-six Blackout County budget. Item one is the health insurance costs. Start off with that.
It's going to be short today, I hope. So, um, Tim Jamison, Amanda Pheasant Meyer and I have met to discuss our health insurance plan. And we're all three are still confident that we can reduce the premium cost by five percent. And without hurting benefits our plan will define and that will reduce the cost to our taxpayers, which was the goal. So that total reduction in cost is three hundred and forty-two thousand, eighty-three dollars, leaving two hundred and sixty-eight dollars to cover, you know, inflationary costs or additional claims or other things. Again, that's a five percent reduction in the square cost overall. And it reduces our tax asking by zero point nine percent. So it falls from a five percent increase in overall collections to four point one percent. Was hoping that was going to take us, you know, below four percent, but we didn't quite get there with that. And I do have the breakout between the funds. I don't know how significant that is. There are some obviously that don't affect property taxes such as the jail commissary fund and secondary roads. But particularly secondary roads that does relieve funds to be used for other things. Do we have any questions about that today?
I saw.
No. No.
Did you do, we're going to review these as well?
Yep. Yeah, I'm going to go to those next here. So I revised the property tax asking worksheet to sh, to incorporate those new numbers. So you can see the total property tax askings and total collections falls to that four point one percent. It was previously at five. That's really all I had to show you on that worksheet. With the tax hypotheticals to individual property owners is the next sheet we'll look at and I'll do the summary. I did give you the details as well. This is a summary of all the details. So you can see for residential property with a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, their tax is going to drop three dollars for that. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but when you spread that across six billion dollars in value, it, it ends up. Um, commercial would drop from sixty dollars on a half million dollar, well, six hundred and twenty thousand dollar property down to thirty-six. Industrial with, of a million and fifty thousand dollar assessed value drops from a hundred and one dollars to fifty-eight dollars. Multi-residential value the same, approximately the same as residential. So the assessed value of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four-ten will drop again three dollars. The residential rural, because they pick up a little more, um, on that same hundred and twenty-four thousand value home, will drop from eighteen dollars to fourteen dollars, so four dollars. And then the ag value drops from thirty-two to twenty-six or six dollars. So that's the difference, you know, we're, we're cutting nearly three hundred and fifty thousand and that's how it impacts an individual taxpayer. I've had a couple of other questions. I have not changed this worksheet yet to reflect that reduction, because I think we want to probably vote on that first. But I did add, and you don't have handouts for this, because this is just all hot off the presses during the meeting this morning. But, um, so over the same time period, I calculated the Consumer Price Index. The cumulative change would have been an increase of thirty-three point four three percent if our taxes had gone up simply at the rate of inflation every year over the last ten. And so you can compare that. We have no property type that is even close to that. Where our urban residential has dropped one point six percent and our highest is ag property, but it climbed twenty-two point two percent. Where again, if everything would have gone up at CPI, we would have expected increases of thirty-three percent. I always think that helps to put things in perspective about how things are changing.
I think that'd be a good one to put on social media.
We'll, we'll talk about that after. I, I, I want to double check my math too, but I think I'm fairly confident with that one. I also, um, Tavis had asked, so what happens if we cut twenty thousand dollars? So I tried to calculate that and I, I have stuck that up here again. I'm going to say I, I did this really quickly during the meeting, so I will double check it. The interesting thing is that twenty thousand is such a small piece of our total tax asking. It's, it's in the sense, it's less than a dollar. So for most categories, you know, if you're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar home, there's no difference when we round to whole dollars. Commercial property tax on the six hundred and twenty thousand dollar property drops one dollar. Industrial drops three dollars and the others just all remain the same. The actual math, the mathematical change is somewhere less than a dollar. So for us really affect change, and that doesn't mean we shouldn't cut twenty thousand if we don't need it. It's just that you will, it'll be hard to see that impact on your personal property taxes, although it does affect our budget as a whole. So, and that, that's really all my prepared information today. I think if you are interested or willing to adopt that change in the health insurance cost, it would be helpful to me if you want to take action on that today.
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendations of a, a reduction in health insurance, uh, cost.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, um, to approve the reduction, uh, in those health insurance costs, uh, which less.
I've got one question on that.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to clarify, because it's, there will be no, uh, loss in coverage for employees or anything. I mean, I, I just, I'm kind of concerned about that.
Yeah, there are no.
But we have a guarantee that that's not going to change. Okay.
I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt. Uh, there are no changes in coverage. There are no impacts to employees. This is just simply trying to true up, if you will, our costs, which is the actual claims and expenses we pay out. Matching that up a little bit better to the premiums that we're basically charging ourselves, right? Um, because it's just the employer cost.
And we essentially, we added more to the fund last year than we expected to, aside.
Right.
Right.
So, right, and Amanda Pheasant Meyer, HR Director, and one thing we talked about with Michelle and Tim and I, um, with our consultants was that this is not a lever you would necessarily pull every year. And it is a very case by case, but it's one that we felt comfortable that, uh, given how the, the funds performed, the claims have performed, that we can, you know, um, utilize that reduction this year. But to your question, Justin, nobody, whether you are an employee, a retiree on our plan, going to cover coverage from, you know, resigning or something like that. You wouldn't experience a difference in the overall plan. It's just our self-insured fund, um, would be, uh, you know, slightly impacted is what we're expecting.
Okay. All right. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
How much did we, I know you don't like to turn rollover, but how much did, how much came from last year?
That actually was on the slides. That's at six hundred and ten thousand, I believe. That's at the top of the slide. So I'm not even proposing that we use all of that because we know we have changes, you know, different things happen and cost of things changes, so, yeah.
Perfect. Uh, we had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Thank you. Good catch. Um, do we have any other?
Yeah, there is one. I was going to say, um, that, um, Nate and I had a good conversation yesterday and we're talking about different things. And I mentioned I was, um, glad to have the opportunity to visit with them. Uh, from our last presentation last week that Michelle had done, I said we noted that there was just one new position. We had the two on for adding positions, but there was just really one that was netting out as a new position and that was in the sheriff's office. And that was, um, he had talked to us about, I think, doing it earlier in the year when he was talking about restructuring his department and everything too. And Nate, please feel free to comment or whatever. I don't want to speak on his behalf, just kind of recapture a little bit what we talked about. And, um, like I said, that included his lieutenant's captains and then this addition of the chief deputy, which is the position that was the newly created one. And I told him, or I asked him at that point in time, I said, I was going to bring this to the board, so I told him in that sense, but I said I wanted his thoughts on the fact, um, if, of maybe not creating that position this year. And kind of holding creation of new positions this year. And I didn't want it to at all take away from the chief deputy position that he had. But doing somewhat like the attorney's office had and maybe netted out with a lower level position since we have so many vacancies in that department anyway. And, um, he did make justification for his budget, said, you know, while we have that vacancy allocation that's there, sometimes that's used for overtime, sometimes training. There's different things that they use their budget for. And so understandably, like I said, making, not making your argument for it, but that's really what he said. He'd really like to maintain it. And I said, well, I still felt we could maybe take a look at restructure, his restructuring and see evaluated in a year from now. And if he needs the position, certainly put the position back in. It would be like a deputy or whatever, a lower level position maybe. But really just kind of using that vacancy of a position. And if we ever get to the point where we were definitely full capacity, definitely he'd need to come to us and ask for that. But I was, had asked that. If you want to comment more on it, please.
You know, I mean, you pretty well covered it. The one thing, a couple of years ago, when I was able to bring in the video registration stuff, that actually eliminated a master control position. So a couple of years ago, I did take out one position over there. Um, this year with the transition from the, uh, all the sworn sergeants to putting in three of the civilian sergeants in. Um, at a base pay that's about ten percent less and going from a senior sergeant retiring to the, uh, junior civilian sergeant coming in, that's actually about a twenty-five percent person decrease there. So we've got essentially seventy-five percent of a, of a body there too. So cuts I've made there, I think I'm actually over the last couple of years, still had even with putting this one back in. Um, but then the other part is save them down, give or take ten bodies right now to recover from all our retirements at the end of the year. So there's obviously cost savings there that theoretically, I know some women say, well, you don't even need to fill a body if you're that many down. Unfortunately, when I'm down bodies, we still have minimum staffing to uphold, whether it's in the jail, in patrol, whatever. So the amount of overtime I'm paying out is kind of ridiculous right now. So when you look at my overall budget, the amount of money that I've spent in between straight time and overtime is still almost the same as what it would be. Even if we take that body out because he or she isn't here, um, that's obviously a hundred thousand dollars, give or take less that I've got in that overtime pool to pay for. So as I look at it, my numbers are pretty close to where they need to be if not spot on. So I would hate to give that up just, A, like I said, it was, December has been about three of you being fully staffed. So my goal for the year is to get back up there. Um, but B, when I'm not there, I'm using that, that body's, the allotted money for them to cover the overtime since they're not there, so.
This is, I didn't have to be acted on today, but it would obviously need to be acted on before long if we did have some consideration. And, you know, I didn't want to shortstaff you at all, that's why.
No, I appreciate that, Nate. It's definitely worth looking at. I'm a hundred percent.
And, um, and correct me if I'm wrong on this too, but you also said you actually filled the chief deputy position in January.
I did, yes.
So that's been, like I said, ongoing in twenty-five. I'm not sure we had the money for it in the twenty-five budget, but we did because of vacancy.
Using some of that, using that vacancy, yeah.
I know, and my understanding is my conversations with Nate is that there is a situation where people were not taking their vacation time. And, um, really kind of working themselves to exhaustion, I think.
So under, under Tony, there were the three of us captains, um, Captain Herbs, Captain Boastian and myself. Um, the three of us, I think, when, at the end of the year, all of our vacation were pretty close to maxed out and all of our sick time would be all maxed out. And as to that, we were working fifty to sixty hours a week, the three of us were. Um, I decided I was not going to do that to my command staff. So I've got my three captains plus I pulled the. So I've got my three captains plus I pulled the chief deputy, turned those up into that. Um, and he's basically just taking some of those hours from each of us. Uh, we're all still working forty plus hours a week over there, so it's, it's not like there's a, a lack of work. Um, it's now that the five of us essentially are, are doing the work that four of us were doing before. But I can, I can.
And we're actually in that structure or not, asking for that.
No, no. And I know you're talking about taking it off the, off the backend.
Yeah, taking it off the backend for now because, yeah, not to work anymore more overtime or create more hardship than is going on now. But it was like, yeah, that's really what is, just consideration of, because we have that vacancy funding there and that could make a difference also for us too. I don't know. Um, how would we handle that, Michelle? I was gonna say, because I would assume it would be you coming to us, whether you needed it for overtime or whether it's for the staffing person or whatever too, um, throughout the year, if we took that position, that hundred thousand dollars out of the budget for that. It would just be simply that as a procedural type thing, right? We amend the budget or have to do something different. I don't expect this to be short, but yeah.
Yeah, that's.
If that were the case, like he stored a position, then he, we'd need to add that the following years, whatever.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you just have to take action to do that.
If we were to, if we were to not do that position this year, how would that impact that rollover, sorry, uh, the employee, um, the million dollar?
Right, I.
It, it would certainly impact it though, right?
It could. It, it could and.
Cause right now, that position.
It just depends on how many other vacancies you have, right? If that's going to make the, become a use of fund balance or if we still have enough vacancies. Vacancies less overtime in the sheriff's budget or vacancies in other positions countywide. I, I just don't have a good magic eight. Also, I don't know if it will make us dip into that.
I mean, you're, you're definitely not gonna show your same savings that you're banking on and for all your.
At least not in your department, yeah. Yeah. That, that would be true. That, I just was trying to roughly calculate that. That actually might bring your total tax collections to just under four percent. I think it would get to under four percent in total collections if we completely divert it from the twenty-six budget. And I used, uh, deputy, a sworn deputy and I used the jail to make it simple. Not splitting it between Earl and, yeah, because it gets complicated, but.
The general fund. Yeah, and I wouldn't be able to short it, uh, uh, outside of that, but it's.
I think you're, that, that's why I was hoping if you choose to do that, it can come.
Yes. Anything for you, Michelle.
Well, really, it's a safe of the test, I know.
Well, if it gets to be a hardship too, Nate, it was like something I wanted you to be able, we'd all be well aware of it. It was something we would, you know, address at that time, but it was, cause it's not at all to create that. It's just that.
I mean, obviously realistically, the odds are I don't get all ten of those spots filled, especially with a couple more retirements coming up this year. So I get from that vantage point, I just, yeah, my overtime hits hard. I guess I don't wanna be looked down upon if I come crawling back here in a year saying, I'm not gonna finish out this budget. Need an amendment, so.
So my biggest concern is what other adjustments we have to do if we're making other modifications for courthouse security.
Yep. Well, again, we can, uh, we've talked about that numerous times and I know, uh, you and Justin and I had the meeting with courthouse staff and they really want to see that fourth body, so there's at least one person roaming the halls. If so, that's gonna be an additional body that, uh, is on top of what I currently have even.
Have we determined deputy versus?
And it could be, it could still be a civilian detention officer too, but either way, it's gonna be an additional body. Um, as I look at it, to keep two people working the front door, that's almost three bodies because you got longer than eight hour day, you got lunch breaks, you got other break stuff in there. So at three bodies, that, somebody periodically off the day will be able to wander, but not the entire day. Um, and that's with me pretty much willing, I'm gonna eat any paid time off anybody takes on that too. And talking to courthouse employees, it sounds like they definitely want that fourth body, um, to roam the floor. If that's the case, I don't have that body to give, so that's gonna have to come from the board and say, yeah, we're gonna get you another one. So on the one hand here, we're talking about reducing my staff by one, but on the other, um, talking about increasing it by one. Um, and again, I just wanna be clear on that one. That's, that's not me coming to you asking for that body. That's.
Now, when do we add that body or when do we, what is the timeline for that?
I've gotta get caught up to where I'm at. I've said it's gonna be fall, best case scenario, before I could take that on.
You did say fall.
Yeah, but, um, that's, we've had a few candidates that looked great on paper here. And just in the last few weeks, we've washed out more than I would have liked to have, but they've been washed out for good reason and we're better off not having them, obviously, but. But yeah, even when we think we're looking really good at candidates, sometimes we're not, so. So it's definitely gonna be a few months till that happens. I think I've actually got three of my military guys all getting active in May, so I'm gonna have three of them taken off on me here shortly. So that doesn't help matters out either, but.
I just feel like, mind you, the sixty percent is already overdrawn, gonna be overdrawn by the end of twenty-six. So I think that would have to be absorbed by property tax payers. I don't, there's no way to get another position out of sixty or not, really not even forty. Forty does have a little fund balance, but it's still taking more than we're gen, than we're projecting to generate and cover those expenses as well.
And those revenues have all been dried up. I mean, there, there is not much coming in there at all anymore, so.
We are, we're still budgeting yet some however.
Yeah, and we're still hopeful on it, but, yeah.
Hey, I, I just wanted to throw in my two cents on that, on that whole topic there. If you can hear me, and I apologize, I've been having a lot of, uh, technical difficulties on my end here. But I, I know, all right, if, so if my numbers, uh, if my recollection is accurate. Nate, didn't you already cut about a hundred and forty thousand initially from your budget, just to try to help out?
Yeah, last year I dropped a hundred thousand and like I said, a couple of years ago, I dropped a mask controller. This year I've dropped, I forget what it was, it was somewhere up in that range. Plus again, moving the, uh, the three positions from sworn to civilian, so. See, I've been, been trying to cut and make.
You may. I'm not disputing that at all. Like I said, it was a good conversation, so I thank you.
Yeah, so, and then I, I thought, and maybe my numbers are just, uh, inaccurate, but I thought for the twenty-six proposal, I thought you trimmed about a hundred and forty thousand or maybe it was forty thousand, but it was a fairly significant amount, just in, in hopes of helping us, uh, reduce tax askings.
Yeah, I forget exactly what it was, but.
Okay, so on the chief deputy thing, Linda, I just wanted to clarify, were you, uh, kinda requesting that we hold off on that? Uh, you've been doing that for.
It was just a topic, like I said, I've looked at it after the, because I know when we talked about it, when Nate had made the proposal, I think, about the new position and then we never seemed to get back to discussing more about the position. And me and I were meeting yesterday and saw it was a perfect opportunity for him to mention it. After last week's budget hearing and saw that in there, that maybe that was an opportunity we could examine or look at to just kinda pull back and look at that restructure in a year from now, see if there wasn't another position, but not to take away the chief deputy position, just to look at maybe.
Okay.
And, and what that proposal originally was, just I was looking for a fourth captain, cause I only have three captain spots. Um, chief deputy by code I can put in there. Um, so what I ended up doing actually was moving him up through, so he's technically not considered a captain now. He's just the chief deputy and there are the three captains, so. So that was why that, my proposal, I kind of just went away with it because, as it turned out, I didn't really. I wanted him to make him a captain originally, just to protect him in case violate, if whatever happens, he wouldn't fall back to his, his previous rank. Well now, if we do drop him from chief deputy, then we have the problem of he would fall back toward a captain, but, uh.
But we weren't, that's not what we were proposing.
No, no.
No, I was just saying, I just knew we'd had the twenty-one, we were going to twenty-two.
He's been appointed chief deputy since that was the first thing I did when I took office. And so that size out there, so if there is a cut, it's basically gotta come off the bottom side.
That was all. And I was just to throw the thought out for today, Justin, if anybody was interested in pursuing that or more information or whatever, that, that was all. It wasn't just to quote on, unless somebody.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure I was tracking, that's all. Then the last thing I was gonna say in reference to courthouse security, um, like I fully anticipate that'll have to come from, uh, additional tax askings. And that's something where, uh, to just take it a little bit farther, I don't think it's a matter, uh, that the staff in the building want it. I think it's a necessity that we have that extra person, uh, roving the building. Um, when we met with, and I apologize because I didn't, uh, offer transparency to you guys who weren't in that meeting, uh, and perhaps even the invite to attend that, but meeting with Judge LaCarre and Judge Oderkirk and several other, uh, staff members, I, I was not aware of the severity of the problem as it is now. Um, and that's where, you know, I, I guess I take the position that it's just gonna have to cost more money to make sure that the people in there are safe. Um, and I would just remind you, you know, and, and considering this, that it's just gonna take one serious act, you know, before we probably get sued or something and, and it could have been avoided, uh, in theory. So and then it's probably, and then in which case I do believe that we would have the security coverage on the backend after the fact. Um, so it's, I think it's just a proactive measure where we can get ahead of things and make sure, uh, that A, we're covered, um, but also people are safe in that building. So I think if we, if it asks another hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty or a couple hundred thousand dollars extra to make the building that much more safer, I think it's worth it, in my opinion.
So the issue that we have though is that we are at our maximum with the three fifty levy. So we really, we cannot add that to the general fund unfortunately.
Okay.
So that, that means either dipping into fund balance for operating expenses, which I would highly recommend we don't do for something that we don't think is really temporary. Or it means cutting something else to add that, that is, I feel like I have to tell you that.
There's no use in.
No, thank you, Michelle.
Pardon me?
Can we, can that come from supplemental? Is that, I can't picture the bucket.
Just the, the employee benefits can come from that bucket, but the actual A, that's the problem.
Can, and if we're at four folks, four are still in the room? Um, I know that we've had contract service. We haven't, and that's been at varying levels. Have we explored other contracts that might be available to us? Because we're looking at a lot of carried costs as well with four staff if they're all sheriff department, right? Like, if they're all county employees, that's a very different long-term view than if we're looking at a contract with a different agency or maybe even the same, but.
Well, that was part of our discussion too, uh, in that process, what do we save in from doing contract to cost and other?
Yeah.
That sounded like a work session probably, that we don't need more information.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know how, how expensive that conversation's been or if it's been, if we're not gonna go with existing, we can just go through sheriff's department. I think there, there's probably some further discussion that we could, at least all have, if you guys have had that.
Yep. Yeah, we, uh, when we have taken that, uh, services out for bid, we have had, uh, several, uh, proposals. Um, we've had different companies in here in the past. Um, it's, uh, particularly, uh, we started seeing, um, uh, turnaround significantly around the COVID time and it just has not, uh, really bounced back since then.
Was Rory involved in the meeting that you had with the judges? Okay.
Um.
Came late? No.
No, Rory wasn't there?
No.
Oh, I just.
No, that was part of it.
No.
You and Justin.
Yeah, this was just a sit down, to kind of a sensing session with them, uh, so they could kinda provide us with some of their personal experiences that they've dealt with over the last couple, few years.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks everybody.
If you're done with that topic, um, I do have one more bid that I, uh, missed.
Oh, yeah.
I apologize for that.
Yep, no good.
What happened to four, so that we're transparent?
Pardon me?
What happened that we didn't have four and we do now?
Uh, it must've been stuck in the file. I just didn't see it.
I, I think what we need to do is reopen the hearing and then, uh, and then pursue the bid opening. There, there's one that needs to be corrected that was, I believe, uh, the bidder was misidentified. And then we need to obviously get this other bid recorded as well, consideration.
All right, so do we have a motion to reopen, uh, the bid opening for proposed furniture at VA at the High Press Campus?
So I'm.
Can we do that at the same meeting at this point?
My understanding is that we can, yes.
I'm sorry, um.
All right, apologize for that. So the correction is, uh, number three, Ladol, Lardol. Um, actually that was Office Solutions. Um, so if you wanna just go ahead on your bid form on number four, you can write in Office Solutions. And that bid came in at ninety-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Nine, five, one, one, zero, and thirty-five cents.
Where are they on them?
That was Office Solutions and then back up to.
Sorry, where are they from?
Cedar Rapids.
Uh, Cedar Rapids, sorry. Um, and then back up to Ladol, that is the one that, uh, we missed. So I'm going to read that one now. Looks like we do have a bid bond. And Ladol came in at. Uh, Ladol is, uh, one hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and four dollars. One, 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 six oh four.
I don't know, you might've mentioned Office Solutions. They did have bid bond too.
They.
Office Solutions had a bid bond?
Yes, they did. All right, apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
They have to close them.
Close.
So move.
Motion in a second to close, uh, the bid hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right.
And should we see the motion to review and place a pile bids?
Yep.
I'll offer that motion to review and place a pile bids to law for tender, you said bids.
We've got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm thirteen. Any reports or information from the board?
I just wanna report that attended the Eagle Center's township meeting last week. Uh, again, meeting some great folks that are helping take care of our townships. We did have a request, uh, from that meeting. Uh, one gentleman there has been serving the county on the P and Z and on the adjustments board. There is a request that we look at adding a liaison from the board on P and Z. I don't know if that's ever been brought forward before or addressed, but it's, it was a real formal request from that township meeting. I don't know what to do with it. It's, it's a request. We're gonna go with it.
Probably need Mike to re, make a referral or, or at least make a legal recommendation or something, at least a review and because that is, get to be kind of a tricky area where you look to.
Yep, and I'm gonna take a look at that because of the fact that they've gotta operate independently of the boards. The, well, board members permitted to go there, having a liaison, I think, might be a step, step too far.
Okay. Yeah, Kim, appreciate that. Um, I know we all got the email, I believe we all got the email from Johnson County forwarding their letter to the governor.
Yep.
Um, just give everyone a heads up, I'm, I'm gonna intend to send that, send a, a version of the same letter around. Just give everyone a heads up, I'm, I'm gonna intend to send that, send a, a version of the same letter around for us to consider and to talk through at the next, next meeting. I do think that the issue was in regards to House Model 75, which specifically targets three of Iowa's 99 counties to be subject to ultimately a gerrymander of the district, so.
We need to do that fairly soon, like you said.
Yeah, 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 so we'll get that penned and sent around to folks to review in hopes of having a collective statement. Yeah, and then also community agency funding applications, hoping to bring that to the board next week just to open up a discussion of what that process looks like, so that we can outline, you know, timelines. The agencies, I know a handful have reached out to me, trying to get some, some insight as to, you know, what to expect. So I think it's good for us to maybe have a discussion about maybe how, what type of applications, how much specificity we want in those applications or how much we want to sort of let them do their thing and let their applications stand on their own merits, so.
Yeah, we did talk about relooking at the examining kind of the criteria and whether we do that differently every year or we just set something. Yeah, so that's good, next weekend.
Yeah. All right, any other information from the board? Otherwise, move into a closed session. Need a motion? Yes, we will. So moved. Yeah, let me, let me read the, the resolution here. Pursuant to the provision of the Iowa Open Meetings Law by the authority of Code of Iowa, Chapter 20.17.3, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors shall proceed in the closed session for the following purpose, negotiating sessions, strategy meetings of public employers, mediation and deliberation, and deliberative process of arbitration, which are exempt from the provisions of Chapter 21. So moved. We need a vote to close it and then go back in. All right, all in favor or starting?
Motion.
Kurt Bach?
Yes.
Haylen?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. We'll also take.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, all right. Do we have a motion to close the, the closed session, to adjourn the closed session?
So moved.
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. I'm 15. We have a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in, in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let these adjourns.